Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Wednesday, November 8th, 2023. This is the regular board meeting of the School District of Waukesha Board of Education. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Ettinger, would you please take the roll call?
Mark Barowski.
Here.
Betty Koenig.
Here.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Here.
Markell Moore.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
Patrick McCaffery.
Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
David Wad.
Here.
Kelly Piasik.
Here. Mr. McCaffery is excused this evening. And, Mrs. Ettinger, can you please verify that the meeting has been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. All right, we're going to start tonight with bright lights. Tonight, we welcome Lynette Kelmage, the Executive Director of the Waukesha Education Foundation, to update us on all her great fundraising.
Sorry, missed the memo. My name is Lynette Kelmage, and I'm the Executive Director of the Waukesha Education Foundation. I know most of you. So for those of you who haven't had the chance to personally meet, thank you for having us, and it's nice to see you in person. I wanted to come together today -- I think it's acting a little weird -- to tell you a little bit more about what our organization is doing within the School District of Waukesha. But before we share our success, I wanted to share with you some photos of some of our events from this last year. Today, I am honored to have two of my colleagues with me, Dr. Jean Schumaker, who serves as our Board President, and also Janika Sobotnik, who serves as our Board Vice President and Grant and Allocations Chair. Both of these individuals are volunteers on our Board of Directors, and without our Board of Directors, much of what we accomplish could not be done. So I wanted to talk a little bit about some of our highlights from 2023. We have 20 annual in Classroom Connect sponsors. Our annual sponsors are businesses that donate $5,000, $2,500, or $1,000 a year to help WEF do what we do. We also have a new sponsor this year in Classroom Connect, and that sponsor donates at least $6,000 a year to go directly to our grant total, which is how we were able to grant extra dollars this year. And that this year was Generac, who gave us a $7,500 gift to add additional funding for STEM-related programs. We've increased attendance and event sponsors at all of our events, including capturing some new event sponsors. A lot of our event sponsors eventually turn into annual sponsors, and they all come to our events and help us spread what we do to our community. We had 55 scholarships this year and awards, and that totaled $41,275. And out of that 55, we had five new scholarships. I've already got two new ones for this year that are going to be added to that. So that is a part of our business that is really growing and makes a huge impact on students. We've had several successful events, one so great, we tried to run it twice. That was fun. We've had a record number of grants awarded, which Janika will be sharing a little bit more with you about. But this year was our record-breaking year for grants within our school district. Like I mentioned, we launched our new Classroom Connect program. That program really stemmed out of businesses coming to us about their philanthropy policies and telling us that the way we had our plans structured no longer aligned with what their businesses allowed. And so we had to change course a little bit and come up with some new ideas in order to have them continue to participate. And it worked out great because it directly impacted our grant program. And then we also had a partnership, as we always have, with the Casual for a Cause program. We're so grateful to Sue and all of the building admins who run the Casual for a Cause program for teachers in our district. This year, we worked together to try to fine-tune that program a little bit and make it easier for secretaries in each of the buildings -- not easier for Sue, but she's a trooper -- for people to pay ahead of time with a credit card versus having to spend $5 a week or whatever to continue to participate in that fundraiser. That fundraiser has raised over $100,000 since its inception, and that's just amazing. So thank you for that. So what does that impact look like? So last year, we did $50,000 in grants for classroom grants and $41,275 in scholarships and awards. So just last year alone, over $91,000 of positive impact came to students and educators within this district that was made possible by our donors, our supporters, and our sponsors. And we've been around now for 21 years. Last year was our 20th anniversary, which we celebrated. So since 2002, we have awarded over $445,000 in grants and over $371,000 in scholarships, totaling over $800,000 in support. So it is a pretty significant impact that our organization has made, and we're continuing to grow that impact each year. Our largest fundraiser of the year is our Evening for Education, so I wanted to take just a second to tell you a little bit more about that. We've moved it to April. I don't think I need to tell you why we've moved it to April. We just know it's not going to snow that day, for sure. We are going to be honoring our 2023 WEF Award winners. We have a Corporate Partner Award, a Community Partner Award, and the Sally Jo Michelko Lifetime Excellence in Education Award. The nomination period for these awards is going on right now and will be through the end of December. So if you know a business, a community organization, or an individual that you think would be eligible for such an award, please take a few minutes to fill out the nomination so that our nomination committee can review it, and we can have another three great award winners this year. We also -- we're going to have sponsorship opportunities and event information, which will be sent out soon. And then our event tickets will likely go on sale in mid-January. How can you help? Help us identify sponsors, think about who's made impact on education. All of you have chosen to serve in this capacity because you care about education in our community, and it's really wonderful because so many of you know so many other people just like you that might be eligible for such an honor. And also, please plan on attending our event. Be a table sponsor. Bring your friends and your colleagues to celebrate education and learn more about why you are passionate about serving in this community. I'd like to introduce our Board President, Dr. Jean Schumaker, who's going to talk to you a little bit more about WEF's future and trying to continue to fund our future.
Thank you, Lynette. Good evening. As you saw, the last 21 years, WEF has done some amazing things. But because of that, we couldn't do what we'd do by ourselves. We've developed some really long-lasting partnerships over the years, and I'm really positive and really appreciative of the partnership we have with the Education -- I'm sorry, with the School District of Waukesha. Without the things that we do, the collaboration and cooperation, we cannot do what we do. So thank you so much for supporting WEF's mission as we go forward. As you see on the slide, we have board members. We have currently 11 board members. They're so dedicated, giving, smart, and intelligent. We have eight board members, and we have three advisory board members, two of which are here tonight, Dr. Jim and Mark. So thank you very much. We're looking for two new board members going forward. With having 11 people on our board, they really work so hard to make sure our events are run well. But again, having more board members will make the work even less stressful going forward. So again, I really appreciate all the board members. We have a diverse group of board members, different backgrounds, different expertise. So together, we really do a good job promoting the vision and the mission of WEF. What I find kind of amazing, back in 2014, I first joined the WEF Board. In fact, Diane Voight and I were on that incoming class of 2014. And at that point, we never dreamed that we could afford to have one employee. Now we have two employees. So back in 2018, our board had the vision and the courage to hire our first Executive Director. And we were blessed and lucky and grateful to hire Lynette Kelmage. Without Lynette, we would never get to the stage that we are now, so we're so grateful for her. And not alone, we have one employee, but now we hired someone last year, Amber Williams. She's our administrative assistant, and she helps us a lot. So with Lynette and Amber, we are so blessed to have great staff to help us out, to help carry our torch forward. Like I mentioned, I'm so proud of what we've done since 2002. I believe our future is bright with WEF. One of our biggest issues is people in the community do not know what we do, what WEF is. There's some misconceptions about what we do, and once they hear about WEF, they're really engaged and really want to hear more about that. So one of the goals we have going forward is to promote WEF, let people know what we do. And number two, we want to talk to individuals and corporations who share our mission to help fundraise, to take us to the next level. You know, $50,000 in grants last year was wonderful. We're not satisfied with $50,000. And we think with the right people in mind, the right promotional products, making the right connections, building the right relationships, we can get that. So you saw one of the slides earlier. We have a mantra that "strong schools, strong businesses equals strong community." And we believe if we talk to the right people, we can get enough investment and enough traction to bring that $50,000 higher up. And I think we're going to do it. I really do. So thank you for the time tonight. At this point, I'm going to introduce Janika Sobotnik. As Lynette mentioned, she's our Vice President for Education Foundation, and she's also our Grant and Allocations Committee Chair. So she wants to talk more about our 2023 grant program. Janika.
Thanks, Jean. Good evening, everyone. As this slide indicates, I have the amazing opportunity to lead our annual grant process, and I will be sharing some highlights of our grant program tonight. Every year, we receive more applications than we have the resources to support. While we would love to be able to say yes to every grant request that we receive, we unfortunately are not at that point yet. However, we are proud that we were able to fully or partially fund more than 50% of the requests that we received this year. We supported grant requests from multiple elementary, middle, and high schools across the district, as well as a few district-wide programs, including the Planetarium and the Environmental Education Program. We like to see our support reach multiple schools and reach different ages of students. As you may remember, 2023 was a historic year as WEF awarded our largest dollar amount in grants since our inception. Lynette, along with our Board of Directors, have worked hard over the years to increase our available resources and grow our grant program, and we are proud of the support that we were able to provide this year. A portion of that $50,000 was a donation from Generac Power Systems that WEF received from our new Classroom Connect program, which enables donors to have a more direct impact with their donation on our grant program. The donation from Generac went directly to fund STEM-related grants, and we are very appreciative of their continued support of our students. We invite you to follow our social media accounts if you don't already. May 2022 grant recipients had the entire 2022 to 2023 school year to implement their projects, and we recently asked them to complete our follow-up report so that we can hear how their projects went. We will be highlighting the grant outcomes over the next several weeks on our social media, so follow us to get a glimpse into the positive impact of our support across the district. I would like to take a moment to recognize a few people that helped make our grant process possible. First, our Grant and Allocations Committee is truly amazing. This group of dedicated individuals reads and scores each application that is received to help make decisions about funding grants, and we wouldn't be able to do what we do without them. Second, we are fortunate to have Sara E. Montare as an advisory board member. As a multi-year grant recipient, she has offered to provide some coaching on how to write an effective grant to teachers, and we appreciate her insights and help with that process. The SDW Business Office, specifically Heather and Mike, have been instrumental in documenting when grant dollars are spent and making sure that recipients are processing their purchases correctly. Lastly, Mary Jo King made the grant winner plaques that were given to this year's recipients, and we appreciate her creativity and help. Every year, we present a symbolic check to the Board of Education for the total amount of grants that we award. I have a check for $50,000 that I would like to present to Dr. Piasik this evening. These dollars are being spent now to help projects come to fruition during this school year.
And I will toss it back to Lynette for some closing comments.
Apparently, my closing comments have closed. Anyway, thank you for all of your support. We really appreciate everything that you do. We know this is a really tough job sometimes, and I know you all come here every month with your best intentions to make this school district a better place, so we appreciate that. We ask you to save some dates. First of all, April 11th is our Evening for Education. We have some fun new surprises for this year. We have our Partners in Education reception, which you're all invited to. This reception honors our school district donors. It honors people that give scholarship money. It has all of our scholarship winners are invited to it, so it's a really nice event. It's held over at Carroll. It's very casual but fun. People wear all their college gear. It starts some great conversation, and that is going to be on June 20th this year. And then August 1st is our golf outing. One of these days, I'm going to actually golf in it. Don't worry, I won't win. But August 1st at Ironwood Golf Course. So we appreciate that. Please make sure you're following us on our website and our social media so that you can stay in tune with what we're doing, and we invite all of you to get involved in any way you can. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lynette, and Janika, and Jean, for being here. Questions or comments anyone have tonight? Mrs. Kozlowski.
Thank you. It's always exciting to see the benefit of your hard work and the impact to our community. I think it's truly just overwhelming at points for all of the hard work. One of the comments was that we can't support all of the requests for grants. How many did we get last year?
I believe the slide said 46 requests.
Did I miss that?
So it varies each year, just depending on demand or what kind of teachers are looking for. But historically, it's been between 50 and up to 100 even years, when it's really been -- we've seen an increased need and requests. So it's around that, in-between that number.
Okay. And what can we do to continue to support and fulfilling those?
Well, we continue to grow our endowment.
Other than the obvious of get out your checkbook?
Get out your checkbooks. Tell your friends and family. Come to our events. Help support the growth of these events. Get people excited about donating directly to our endowment. It's the end of the year. A lot of people like to make -- you know, we are not part of the school district. That's a misnomer that many people have. We are our own separate 501(c)(3). So we have a large endowment that we manage through the Waukesha County Community Foundation, who are excellent partners. So donations to our endowment are tax-deductible as allowed, and we -- the more we grow our endowment, that's how we figure out how much money we have to give, and the larger that endowment is, the more times we can say yes.
And so the target for next year, if we had 46 requests, what was the total ask of those requests?
I think it was a little over 100.
Yeah.
Okay. And have we raised the benchmarks? Or are we going for 100 this year? Is that?
We're going for it. We go for it every year.
Was that the goal? Okay. I appreciate it. You guys do amazing. Thank you.
Absolutely. You're welcome.
I would just add that -- did you want to speak, Ms. Koenig? Okay.
I just wanted to share that, being a new board member, I'm really excited to get more involved in this. I've heard about it for years. I think many years ago, I did receive a grant back in my classroom, but it needs to be on the other side now, so I'm really excited to get these dates down and be more involved in this.
That's great.
Thank you.
I'll follow up with an email, since my last slide didn't work.
The events that you all host are really, like, top-notch events, very professional, very well-done. Like, I'm always impressed at just the professionalism and the fun and the level of detail that you go to to make everything perfect. So it's clear that you put a lot of time and energy and just passion and commitment into that, all of you and the whole board. The other thing that I just greatly appreciate is, you know, we sometimes take for granted that we have a lot of resources because we have a lot of students that we need to serve, but the grants that you fulfill in classrooms, like, you could just see the happiness on the teachers' faces and the staff's faces. I mean, these are things that really enhance that environment, that go above and beyond what we're able to do for our students in the classroom. And so just bringing that kind of joy and capacity into the learning environment is just so greatly appreciated. And then the things that you do for the college students as well. So it's that whole continuum of, you know, from our kindergartners all the way through to our seniors who are moving on to the next thing. So we just appreciate that, how much attention you put into making sure that you're serving us at all levels, and very appreciate that.
We appreciate you saying that, and we do have, every year in May, on a secret date, we go out to the schools to celebrate those grants and surprise them. And any of you are welcome to attend. I always try to send it out and send out a sign-up. But until you really see it in person, it's kind of the day that reinvigorates our entire board because you realize what all the hard work was meant for, and so it's really a nice thing to do. So feel free to come on out.
All right.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. All right. We also have student representatives here with us tonight. Do we have recognitions?
I don't, but I have a preview of sorts, if you don't mind, for next month.
Yeah. Let's do that and then stay right there, and then we'll come right back to you.
So next month, we have a number of fall club and athletic successes, including several state-level performances and teams that made it. So we'll have our athletic directors and a number of those students with us. And then also, just yesterday, Kyle Lemieux, Athletic Director at Waukesha West, was elected as the Vice President of the Wisconsin Athletic Directors Association. So that's pretty exciting, and we'll honor him next month as he'll be here with the West contingency. So we have that to look forward to.
Great. Thank you. All right. Without further ado, we have North students joining us tonight, Jessica Ortiz and Belle Walker, to tell us about events and activities that are happening at North High School. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you for having us. So the first slide is, this is during freshman orientation. This August, I believe, we had our freshman orientation, and we welcomed our class of 2027. Because I am a graduating senior this year, I participated and showed them the ropes and showed them through the school, and just got to see how excited all the freshmen were to become high schoolers. And just walking them through and showing them through their classes. And I believe that the picture next to the one in the bleachers is a health class, which we all have to take our freshman year to ensure that we all are well-aware of our bodies and how just kind of safe in your teenage years.
All right. And then the slide of the pictures on the left -- sorry. The pictures on the left and on the right are showing how some kids work well with their hands and they're more tactile learners. We also have pictures showing teamwork with the -- I don't know if you can tell, but those are like a picture with pencils. I think those were our freshmen, and it was like the beginning of class, people were still getting to know each other, and that was pretty fun. Then the picture kind of -- I don't know if you can tell, but it's a blue screen right there. That's a picture of Mr. Perry, our science teacher, showing kids how to write Cornell notes for the first time. These are also our freshman kids, and it's great. It just really shows the different types of learning styles we have for the different type of kids, because some kids do learn better with different types of learning styles, and it's just, we have a great variety of those at our school.
This is my favorite part, homecoming week. So this year, we brought back our Powderpuff, which was for all grades, so freshmen through senior, got to participate and create their own teams. And so in the pink, that's one of the teams in their uniforms that they got to create. And we just kind of got to see how they all progressed through practice and teamwork, because there was a lot of practice with that. The girls would, "Oh, we have practice today after school. We have practice tomorrow." So they were really working hard. They really enjoyed the Powderpuff games. And there's also the pep rally on there, which was so fun. Our seniors won the spirit stick this year. And so we got to watch all of the grades work together and work against each other because we were all competing for the spirit stick. And that's tug-of-war, which the sophomores beat our seniors, which was definitely a surprise to the seniors. So yeah, that was really fun, watching the seniors and sophomores and the freshmen even, especially because it was their very first pep rally in high school. So we got to watch them all engage and do the first thing in their high school experience, as well as our homecoming court up in the top-left, which was all seniors, because only seniors could participate, I believe. And so, yeah, that was a lot of fun. Do you want to add anything about the Powderpuff?
Powderpuff. Okay. So I went to one of the games, and I believe it was juniors versus seniors that won. And then I didn't go to the last game, so I cannot tell you who won that last one, but we made it to the finals. And then our homecoming court, oh, I forgot who won, but it was the whole school voted on who was the king, and we were all really excited. He wore like crowns, there were sashes, it was very festive, and everyone was really just contributing to everything. The dance was really fun. Did you go?
Yes, I did go to the dance.
We were all dressed up. It was the theme "Once Upon a Time."
Yes.
So we also had a movie night under the stars where the -- on the home -- not the home, the football field, we played this one big banner, and then there was the movie Tangled played. So a bunch of us went and watched that under the stars. It was beautiful. A lot of people came. Everyone was very just coming together throughout this time. We also did a little competition of the Halloween decorating, which, again, seniors won because we were definitely the most -- we put the most effort into it. And then all the grades participated. We had teachers randomly, just randomly come together and then vote on which one they thought was the best one, and that was really cool. So those points went to the who would win the spirit stick, which is, again, why a lot of people were really committed into doing that. Yeah.
So these are state-bound athletes. We had cross-country go-to-state this year and boys volleyball, which the boys volleyball team, we all did this big send-off where the band played, and we were all in the atrium, pretty much just cheering them on and rooting them on. And a lot of people went to the state game, and I heard that it was fun. I'm not sure, did they?
I'm not sure if they won.
Yeah. But I know that there was a lot of people who went and supported, and there's a lot of community in our school when it comes to sports and activities even. So that was a lot of, like, that was fun to see and feel, all the energy of everybody being proud of our boys volleyball team for going to state this year.
And then marching band. I think this year, we won third place, but the previous two years, we won second place at state, which is pretty awesome. And I personally am not in marching band, but I have a lot of friends who are, and they're really proud of what they've done to get there. I know they practiced a lot of cold hours outside doing that. And they told me that it was a bunch of, like, fun traditions they do inside their own, like, little marching band, which is fun and something that I think is really beautiful to see, seeing how our school comes together for that sort of stuff.
Here's the clubs and activities. And this, I believe, is ecology club, key club, and rock climbing, which all do a lot of things. The right photo is when they went trick-or-treating for canned goods to kind of bring back to the community. And the rock climbing, oftentimes, they'll put a rock climbing wall outside in the front of the building just to promote Rock Climbing Club and show people what it's about, and they have the harnesses. And during lunch, we're able to go out and just climb, and it's kind of a good way to get out energy if you don't have a gym class or you just want something to do during lunch because you're not eating. And we have other clubs, like, I'm president of our BSU, so our Black Student Union. So we work a lot with Key Club, and we work with UW-Madison Extension, which I -- we get a small grant from Extension to do volunteering and to go on conferences, which I recently went on, which is a lot of fun. I enjoy getting to mentor and help I enjoy getting to mentor and help other students of color in our district, because there is not a lot of us. So I enjoy being able to just like be active in my club and be present and continuously work on things like that.
And then I'm the president of the LSU, the Latino Student Union Committee. We do a lot of volunteering stuff, especially around the holidays. We try to bring our culture into the school, just so we can educate others, I guess, on what it really is to be Latino and Hispanic, the differences between that, and then trying to just be involved with our community. It doesn't have to be just Latinos, we can, we like welcome everyone into our club. And I'm also in international club, which is really fun, because we go on field trips all the time about learning different cultures. Again, that's also, so I feel like it's really important, just so you're educated about that, you're not the only one in this community. There's a bunch of other people, and then you guys really come together, and it's really fun and interesting to see.
Yeah, I do enjoy seeing that our school has made it so that we can integrate all of the people of color. So anyone who is not in the majority, and I like being able to see that they're able to be diverse and let us show our culture and express our cultures, because it's definitely an important aspect of our lives, and I enjoy that I can bring that into school. And here are our building updates. So we got a new sign in front of our school, which was really exciting, kind of scary to see it set up, because it was just a big crane lowering down to the ground. But we got a lot of new hallway signage, which is nice, because it helps all of, the incoming freshmen especially, to find their way around, because before, the signs weren't as simple to see or read, they were a little bit old, but we got new signage. We also got over fifteen freshly painted classrooms, which is nice, because the classrooms look more pristine and we're able, I was, okay. So I went in during part of the summer for a thing that I had to do, and you could smell the paint throughout the school, but it was nice, because it was like, okay, so they're keeping it up, they're making sure that our building is a clean, nice environment for all of us to be able to be educated in. As well as, we had the new film over the windows, so it's not like, you know, they keep that updated and it's nice, it's not all cold and chilly. But I think you know more about the smart boards.
Yes, I know, a bunch of the new, not new, a bunch of the math departments got a new smart board. That makes it way easier for them to do all the drawing and stuff, and then work with the students better. I know, I think it's, I'm in AP Stats right now, and then the way he like work, he doesn't know how to work the new board yet, but he's learning slowly, and, but it does really, you see the big change from last year to this year, where before, you just had to look at the screen, you write down notes, and now you're actually interacting with the class, you're actually doing stuff there. And I think it's a really good change, I like that change.
And then our upcoming event is Tuesday, December 5th, for open house for our class of 2028. So the next year's upcoming freshman class. And it's for all students and all families to just kind of come and look at the school and walk around. And there's a lot of different, like, programs that are going to be there. So Avid, which is really important for the freshmen to get into, because I wasn't personally in Avid, but I know a lot of people who were. And it's really, really helpful, like, I've seen a lot of people who had no clue how they were gonna do college stuff, how they were gonna apply to colleges, how they were gonna even, you know, get through high school. And then Avid really like helps them build that up and move forward through high school and to college. So I think that it's nice that they're gonna have that at the open house for the, for next year's upcoming freshmen, because it's good to know about it before you come in, because it's kind of hard to get in after you're there. And here are the socials, and those are just photos of like Ecology Club on their trips, working with like the elementary schoolers and such. Do you guys have any like questions that we could answer?
Thank you, ladies, for all those updates. Does anybody have questions? Who would like to start? Mr. Wad?
Thank you so much for coming and sharing everything that's going on at North. I guess I always enjoy it when, when those that come to present to us from the high schools, when they're seniors, when they share with us what they're planning on doing when their high school career is over in June. Do you mind sharing with us what your plans are?
Yeah, of course. So I just recently got accepted into UW-Whitewater, actually. And I'm going for, I'm going for education, middle and elementary education. And so I want to work with younger kids, work with middle schoolers, elementary schoolers, and just come back, because I plan on coming back to the Waukesha School District to teach. We need, I think, I feel we need more diversity in our teachers, in our staff. So I'd really enjoy being able to come back and bring that into the community.
And then I got accepted into UW-Stout, which is a great polytechnic school that helps you, oh, I don't know how to explain that, but it's, yeah, it's more hands-on learning, thank you. It's where they slowly integrate you into like the actual career, so it's not, you're just, it's not like you're just learning off a page, off a book. You're actually like going into the workforce and learning about that. I want to study for hospitality management and tourism, so that's going to be pretty cool to see where I end up on, because I feel like you could go anywhere with that career.
Well, congratulations to both of you, best of luck.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna dive in headfirst. Have you girls heard about the changes to the high school schedule?
Yeah.
What are your thoughts about that?
So at first, because I heard it, I think I overheard my mom talking about it, because like my younger brother is still a sophomore. So I was like, what's, what are you talking about, what's going on? And so then I found out about the block schedule, I heard my teachers talking about it, and I was like, oh, so that's actually happening. I was like really confused, because it was like, they said it was gonna be like hour and fifty-minute long classes or so. And I was just like, oh, like, that's just, that's different, that's new. Like, I know my mom told me when she was in high school, they had block schedules, because she went to Hamilton and Milwaukee. But I was like, oh yeah, I have six classes a day, and I have homeroom and lunch. So that's just completely out of the ballpark for me, just only going and sitting in a room. I'm sure that the teachers will find ways to like make it so that the kids still can get up and move around more, because I don't think that sitting in a desk for that long is all that fun. But I definitely think that it'll be helpful, it'll give more classwork time and more help for homework. So I think that it's a nice, I think the schedule sounds pretty nice. I think it'll definitely be different for the people who are already in high school. But I think it'll just be a, kind of just an easy way to integrate the freshmen, because it's not, okay, you have to go to this class, and this class, and this class, all in one day. So I think that it's, I don't know, it sounds like a nice schedule, my brother's excited for it, because it's not as many classes in the day. So I think that it's pretty helpful.
So I don't know, I haven't heard anything about this, but it sounds like it's basically a college, which I think is good, helping high school students prepare about like the realities of what a college would be like. And sometimes it's gonna be an hour-long class or something, and I think that's really interesting for them to figure out how to balance that, especially starting them off young, so they can grow into that, already having good studying habits for the future, I guess. So I, you know, I'm kind of like wary about where that's gonna, how that's gonna, you know, come into effect, but I feel like it would have a positive impact. I don't see anything negative happening, since it's not gonna be the full eight hours in a day. I feel like people are gonna be really excited about that.
Well, you both did an amazing job, just on your feet responding to kind of a tricky question, which is probably unfair, because being seniors, you're not gonna have to live with all of this. But I appreciate your feedback on that, and you did a great job. Anybody else? All right, well, we'll look forward to hearing some more updates from North after the holidays, but thank you both for being here, you did a great job.
Of course.
Thank you for having us. All right, we are now at the section of our meeting where there's an opportunity for citizens to speak. We have four speakers tonight, because there are six speakers or less. Speakers will be notified at three minutes, but be allowed up to five minutes to complete their comments. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language, and to be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future board or committee meetings. Speakers are here to address the board, not the audience. The school board does not endorse any comments made by members of the community here tonight. We'd like to remind our community members of the impact of their words on others and that our children are watching. We commit to communicating with you in respectful and productive ways and ask that you do the same. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the board, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Please note that no obstructions can be created between the board and the audience. Visual aids cannot be used, and the area behind the speaker and podium will be clear during public comment. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cell phones. Our first speaker tonight will be Kyle Bedelev, followed by Paul Reese. Welcome, Kyle.
What a great segue from the North girls. We actually, on Thursday last week, we slowed practice down so that the kids could watch the volleyball, the boys volleyball team at state. The irony of the pool discussion is not lost on me, that we are preparing for the state championship this week, while we're also discussing about repurposing the pool. I actually left practice early today to be here for this meeting. I am Kyle Bedelev, the head coach for the women's team at Waukesha North, finishing my seventeenth season on Saturday at the WA State Meet held at Waukesha South. I was the head coach for the men's team for ten seasons. I resigned on September 19th as the men's coach to fulfill a lifelong dream of coaching at my alma mater, Marquette University High School. I do want to thank the board for their accurate commentary on Monday night, that stakeholders were not invited to the meeting held at North for the Booster Club when the discussion was going to be specifically about the pool repurposing. I'm still baffled by the lack of awareness by North and the school district of Waukesha on this. The girls program has averaged thirty students on the team over the last ten years, with half being from Waukesha North. Yes, the numbers stalled during the COVID year, but there were eleven from North. The high point was in 2018, when we had twenty-six just from North, and I see this number continuing to grow. And although the boys' numbers are smaller, they could easily spike like they did back in 2016, when the North group went from five to fifteen in one year. The pool is not perfect, it's twenty-five meters long, which is not conventional for competitive swimming in the United States, yet it does have proper lighting and ample bleacher seating to host our dual meets, and a seven-team invite, a seven-team invite during the girls' season. I speak in favor of working on solutions to keep North's pool operational. The North High School student body deserves the same opportunity given to the students at West and South, to learn to swim, to learn to swim in fire classes, become lifeguard certified, and compete as a member of the swim team in their home pool. Utilization seemed to be a big buzzword in Monday night in the, during the FNF meeting. There are a number of solutions possible to increase utilization that will work. As an example, Lake Country Swim Team is using the pool every day next week. However, the solutions only work if the school board is truly interested in keeping the pool open, which does not seem to be the case. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul Reese, followed by Mike Walsh.
Good evening. I want to respond to something in the paper that was written, and Kyle wrote, and not about what he said, but about the compassion in it. I get the compassion, I get, anybody who's involved in any sport with their children has compassion about it. There is a lot of time, and it's personal. It, it, there is, my daughter is going to be sixteen, I've been taking her to swimming for fourteen years. It, there's, she thinks it's just something that happens every day, there's a lot of investment there. And I loved watching the girls at sectionals swim. The last relay was the greatest, where, you know, you have a mixed amount of emotions there. West came ahead, and then they won. But I also know all the girls that lost, a lot of them, that came and finished third, and you feel for them, you know? There's, it goes both ways, it's a very emotional thing, and there's a lot of compassion in sports and parents, and I have investments in it, coaches have investments, they inspire one another. So of course, there's gonna be attachment and emotion with this. That being said, I wanted to explain a little bit about, because I gotta think the cart ahead of the horse, what a meet is and how they work. You know, when it says swim/dive, it's sort of like track and field. So diving really isn't anything to do with swimming per se, it's like shot put and sprinting. You know, they're both on track and field, and they're both one thing, but they're, they're not the same, they're separate. So with our diving, they're co-opt already. Diving, all three high schools meet together, and they all dive in one place, and it alternates between West and South. So we already do that part with diving, because it takes a lot of the pool. They take a lot of the area up, you know, and personally, my opinion is that the swimmers feel like they own the pool sometime and don't want to relinquish it, but it's either really here nor there, but it's just part of the sport. And so there's all these aspects to it, and North does not have any diving there. It doesn't have the ability to dive there. It is, it's shallow, it is metered, it's different than everything else. It's an oddball, and it was obsolete from the time they built it, because the, what was done. So it, we talked also about opportunities, I don't want to switch here a little bit, about opportunities that are gonna, could arise from changing this and going into one, combining these two schools into the other two schools. Is when, if you look at Arrowhead, and Arrowhead will have a lot of girls at state, because they have a big team. I think fifteen seniors or something like that this year, it's a big team. So what that affords you, the ability to gain on, is in your relays. So if you now, like, West has one relay team going into state. Well, if you took the two best girls from North, and maybe the two fourth and fifth best girls from, or fifth and sixth best girls from West, you'd get another relay team in. So you have more opportunities to go further in sports, and to go further into state and continue your career and get that experience even at younger years than you would normally get if you have smaller individual teams. So there, this also isn't a zero-sum loss here. There's going to be a place that we're going to use this, this for, it's not going to be cold storage. So there's going to be benefits to the community and to that school. Also, I would really like to keep all the coaching staff we have, because I would love to have some, some start and turn coaches going on, some more clinics on that, and get to make our teams better than what they are, so we can concentrate on some other things while other girls are doing different things. We would now be afforded these opportunities, and I would really like to see that done, because some girls struggle with different things. And I'm talking about girls, because boys would do the same, but, you know, with their, you're getting your starts, and you're underwater, you're streamlined. All these things are so critical to just shave a few tenths off. My daughter missed, her relay team missed state by point oh four seconds. Those things matter, you know, and if we could have some coaching, additional coaching onto those fields, they can make it, you know? They missed by point oh four seconds, that's by the skin of your teeth. So anyways, my two cents, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh, followed by Tariq Akhmut.
Hi, everyone, Mike Walsh, first time to the new building here. Excuse me, I just kind of came here tonight, because I want to be Waukesha's Mythbuster when it comes to things that happen in the Waukesha schools and the school district. So one of the things I would like to talk about tonight was, I wasn't really here when you guys had all the Rainbow Land stuff going on. And I think you guys did a fantastic job, you know, with that. And, and you guys were told that, you know, it's a free speech thing, and now you're being sued for that, and you're trying to stop that. The educator that left the district because she broke the rules, really taught a great lesson to the, to the students. The students were taught that in the real world, when they leave the schools, that you can, when you start mouthing off about your employer, okay, there's rules. There's, there's things that, you know, will put you on the street, and you'll be looking for a job. This teacher is, is someone that, you know, well, I guess, let's, let's take it back a second. You know, the Alliance, which is the group that, you know, pushes for, you know, things that, like she pushes for, they talk about teachers in the school district of Waukesha don't make enough money, they're underpaid, right? Well, on August 19th, this very teacher, who no longer is a teacher in Waukesha, posted an update that says, she's officially not going back to the classroom this fall. I've had a few offers, but none of them paid well. She didn't apply to the school district of Waukesha, she applied for other districts, apparently. So she posted this in her, the thing where the people are contributing to one of the members here, the GoFundMe that one of the members here contributed to after the nine, you know, the nine vote to get rid of her. So apparently, Waukesha's paying enough money, or more money than other districts, right? right? So hopefully, the young lady that's going to go to school to be a teacher that was here tonight applies for Waukesha, because it sounds like you guys are actually paying a little more money. The other thing that's kind of a myth is that Waukesha is a place that teachers are leaving at record rates, and you guys know this, you talked about it recently, but only 11% of the teachers are leaving the school district of Waukesha. And the state average is 15.9%. And even Diane Voight was quoted in The Freeman saying that she was pleased with the results, particularly when viewed through the prism of the broader trends retaining to education in today's labor force. And we're doing very well in the current market, okay? But yet, you hear the Alliance telling everybody that, you know, this is the worst place to be, because teachers are leaving at a rapid rate, but apparently, they're not. When you close schools in the city of Waukesha, right, the marginalized students are going to be left behind. But you guys talked about recently that math skills at Hadfield, the combined school, is where the kids are actually doing better. They're doing better, right? So we're going to have elections coming up, but we're going to hear people saying that, "Oh, my God, the school district is terrible," right? "We're in the news all the time." It's not you guys that are putting anybody in the news, okay? It's the people that are, the radicals on one side with the Alliance. So now, they're going to tell you that the pool, you got to close it, or you can't close this pool. You can't close it because of equity, right? I've heard the term equity. Is it equitable when the taxpayers, which are the ones that people use the term equity the most with, can't afford to pay the taxes? And people forget that taxes are what pays for the schools, what pays for the teachers, what pays for the pools, and things of that nature, right? Well, there's not an infinite amount of dollars that are left. So can you combine the pools, you know, to have two? I don't know if you guys have been in Waukesha long enough, but Les Paul, which used to be called Central, back when I went there, it had a pool, right? I turned out okay. My kid turned out okay, he went there. You know, I don't think the pool is the reason why kids get educated, you know? It is an extracurricular, but it's an expensive extracurricular. If you have two pools in the city, you have, you know, one of the questions I saw online is, "How will these kids get to the pool? How are we going to get them there? Why don't we ask all the districts that use our pools?" Right? It's pretty simple, because other schools get to our pools. And the one thing I heard Mr. Clark say the other day is that essentially, and the way I heard it, is that they're not paying, the other schools coming in are not paying their fair share, right? So our equitable taxpayer in Waukesha, the ones that don't have enough money, okay, are paying for districts that have more money, right? So it's all BS, right? It's all BS. You guys, I don't know the right decision on the pool, and I don't have a strong opinion on it, because I don't know the total particulars of the financials of it. That's for something for you guys to decide. But if it's financially feasible that it should go away, and the kids go to another, you know, like Paul said, okay, you can combine the teams and maybe make the kids stronger and give them more opportunities, you know? Blow through all the, you know, all the dust that these people are kicking up, and you guys will make all the right decisions. You guys have done a great job. The education is getting better in the school district of Waukesha, and that's because the board changed three years ago to what it is today. Thank you.
Mr. Akhmut, you're our last speaker tonight.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education of Waukesha. I'm here to talk about my favorite topic. I'd like to say hello to the audience here. You know, while we were waiting for this meeting to start, we had one of the graphics go up, which said, "In five days," which is November 13th, is World Kindness Day. So it talks about being kind to one another. Here at the podium, you have said, "Please respect one another." Well, that respect and kindness extends to all of God's children. But we aren't doing that here. We had the two young ladies here, who are an example of what happens when we practice diversity, yet we are reducing it. We don't show respect to students who might be, who are not straight, who are LGBTQ+ or some students who are bullied because they are black, or they are Hispanic. That's not, that's nothing kindness. You know, we have to practice kindness to each other. It's easy to get upset or to discriminate against people, but it is better to integrate, to be diverse, because with diversity comes strength, okay? And we have seen places, many businesses practice diversity because they know it benefits their bottom line. And they practice those DEI principles, because they do that with adding employees. I've worked at employers who, many years ago, many years ago, before this was the buzzword, who practiced that, because it made their whole workforce better. It led to greater acceptance of their products in the marketplace. So diversity is not something that's woke. Diversity is something that is good. So I would ask you to change some of the policies we have implemented here that have reduced diversity. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our speakers tonight. All right, we're moving into our minutes approval. We have three sets of minutes for your review tonight. We have the October 11th regular board meeting, the executive session from October 11th, and also the October 23rd special board meeting. Mrs. Voight.
I move for approval of both three sets of the minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Koenig. Thank you. Any corrections or questions? All right, Mrs. Ettinger, would you please take the roll call?
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Mark Burowski.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes eight-zero. Thank you. Mr. Burowski, do you have anything to add to Mrs. College's WEF update tonight?
No, I think I'll just leave it as the presentation. It was very good.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Mr. Clark, would you give us an update on the gifts, please?
Hi, Husco International Eating Company and Webco Engineering gave $495 to be used to assist in the additional cost of student busing for the Experience of the Trades Expo. And that's all the gifts for tonight.
Thank you. All right, in addition to the gifts report, your agenda includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you'll have that opportunity. There were no expulsions for your consideration tonight. There are two policies that are included in the consent agenda this evening. One is 5,200 attendance, and the other is 23, actually, no, I apologize. There's one policy, which is 5,200 attendance. And we'll give an update as to what happened to 2340 during the committee reports. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, they could indicate so at this time. All right, seeing none. Mr. Burowski, would you please present the consent agenda for approval?
All right, thank you, Mrs. President. So early this evening, the Human Resource and Compensation Committee approved two resignations, three retirements, and six new contracts. The information was provided in your packets, and an addendum was placed on your desks. I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Looking for a second.
Give me a second.
It's going to be perfect tonight, but I'm not. Thank you, Mrs. Kozlowski. Mrs. Ettinger, thank you.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Mark Burowski.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes eight-zero.
And, Mrs. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Seber.
All right, thank you, Dr. Piasik. Just a few pieces for the board this evening. First, congratulations to all of our staff, kids, and families on a successful first quarter of the school year already that wrapped up last week on Friday, November 3rd. Secondly, we're quickly approaching Veterans Day later this week, and I certainly want to celebrate everyone in our school and greater community who has or continues to serve our country. Great respect for all of those individuals. And third, we're also approaching Thanksgiving, which is going to occur before our next meeting cycle, and is just over two weeks away, two weeks from tomorrow, actually. We have a great deal to be grateful for, and the start of the school year we've had is one of the things that I'm really grateful for, and certainly, all of you can embrace as well. So happy Thanksgiving to all of you, and may we all be grateful for the many blessings in our lives, and may you all enjoy a wonderful Thanksgiving with your families. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Seber. All right, we're moving into now our committee reports, and we will start this evening with the Teaching and Learning Committee, which will be presented by Mrs. Koenig.
Thank you, Madam President. The Teaching and Learning Committee met last evening, Tuesday, November 7th, 2023. We have one action item and two discussion items on the agenda for this evening. Our action item tonight is the approval of the high school block schedule. Since our last board meeting in October, a team of teachers and administrators from all three high schools visited Peewauckee High School to learn from teachers and students who have been using a similar schedule for the past 29 years. The team was able to gain a wealth of information about running an AB-type block schedule. Building administrators have engaged students and parents for feedback as well. Lessons learned and feedback themes were shared by the administrators from North, South, and West during last night's Teaching and Learning Committee meeting. The team reported that overall, the feedback was very positive among teachers, parents, and students. A proposed bell schedule was presented based on collected feedback and the work of the team. On a vote of five to zero, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the implementation of a high school AB block schedule for the 2024-2025 school year as presented. The committee requests board approval, and I so moved to approve the implementation of a high school block schedule for the 2024-2025 school year as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. We have plenty of opportunity for discussion or questions. Would anyone like to start? Mr. Wad.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I just want to say thank you to those principals and the other folks in Teaching and Learning who did such a fantastic job gathering information, doing the due diligence to ensure that the schedule that they're anticipating us to adopt tonight will work best. I know they evaluated a number of different types of block schedules. I thought it was a model for any of these decisions that the district makes that will have significant impacts on students and families and teachers in terms of gathering feedback, really seeking to understand the challenges that could be faced by changing the schedule from what it was to what they were proposing and addressing those. I can tell you that I had several parents reach out to me when they first started hearing about this informally, but concerned about things like band and AP classes, and a number of other concerns around what that schedule could have in terms of an impact in some of those areas. And I know, Dr. Piasik, you called it out last night as well. It was just outstanding to watch them address all of those concerns, and it demonstrates that, whether it was from staff, whether it was from parents, whether it was from other districts who've gone through this, they really did a good job of carefully considering all of the potential issues and how to ensure that they, it did not become a detriment. So, and I want to thank the committee, because you all did a great job as well in shepherding this through as well. So I wholeheartedly support this schedule, and I am particularly pleased with the way that the work was done to get us here.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Voight.
Just a clarification. You said that Peewauckee's used this schedule for 29 years?
Yes.
That's impressive to have. Yeah, I know they referenced at the meeting that they would, you know, have the students from there talk to our current underclassmen to let them know that, you know, it does work, and it's, you know, something that's very near neighbors that have experienced it, which I think makes it, you know, very credible.
And just to add to that, I had to laugh when I heard the young lady talking about her thought about having, you know, only four classes versus eight, when this was proposed, and when some of the teachers asked the students informally in Peewauckee, "How do you like the schedule?", they haven't known anything else. So they're like, "Oh, it's great. We love it." And they said, "Well, how would you like to have eight classes during the day?" And they're like, "What? Eight?" And then they were all shocked, like, that, "How could you have eight classes? Oh, my gosh, that'd be crazy." And it's kind of, just makes you laugh, because they think having eight classes is way too much. So it's all about perspective, you know, what, you know, different experiences.
Mr. Moore.
I want to say thank you to everyone involved in the, you know, research process and the seeking out process. I did have my concerns, and I spoke with the board president and the superintendent and other teachers about my concern in the beginning, because 90 minutes, that's a long time, and the issues that could arise from that. Those who were teachers know behavior issues in a classroom that long, or keeping the students engaged, and how are they going to be able to, you know, stay engaged, you know, in that long span of time in a classroom? So I was happy, I was fortunate enough and grateful to have those concerns addressed. But on the flip side of it, not only the concerns were addressed, the positives were addressed as well. So it kind of put my concerns at ease a little bit, because one thing I am, you know, always going to ask when something's new like that, how is it going to play out for the students, and is it in the best interest for them academically? So I want to say thank you to the committee, thank you to the teachers and staff, and thank you to everyone involved in this. So I shared my thoughts with those who I had private conversations with, and I really appreciate the concerns of mine being addressed, so.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Mark Burowski.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes eight-zero.
Okay. Our first discussion item for this evening is revisions to the field trip policy 2340. The committee had no additional concerns or recommendations for the proposed changes to the field trip policy 2340. Since the process will move to principal and superintendent approval in many cases, and since there was no urgency to updating the process, the committee asked that the TNL team bring the policy back for formal approval in December, along with a review of the administrative procedures that will be put in place.
Any questions? Mr. Burowski, did you have a question here? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Our second discussion item is KPI report out on Wisconsin Forward Exam and ACT results. Per the reporting out timeline for the Teaching and Learning Key Performance Indicators, or KPIs, an update was provided on the progress of the Teaching and Learning Key Performance Indicators that focus on state assessments, specifically the Wisconsin Forward Exam and ACT. Of note is that all KPIs regarding Forward and ACT exam scores reflected improvement in all areas from the 2022-23 school year, and our SDW students also exceeded the state averages in all KPI categories. The KPIs were established to set goals for improvement that would be difficult but feasible to achieve, and our district continues to work very hard toward achieving those goals. Here are some, here are some of the data that was shared during last night's Teaching and Learning Committee meeting. Our district ACT scores achieved a 19.6 average score, slightly exceeding the state average, and reflecting an improvement of 0.3 or 3/10 of a point from last school year. Our KPI is to exceed the state composite score by one point. In English Language R, so ELA, the number of SDW students who scored proficient or advanced on the state Forward Exam was 41.2%, an increase of 3.5%, which exceeds the state growth of 1.3% and falls just shy of our KPI goal of 45%. For third graders, our percentage of proficient or advanced students is 39.8%. While this exceeds the state proficiency rate of 31.37%, and reflects a 2 percentage-point improvement from the prior school year, it falls short of our KPI goal of 50%. In math proficiency, our students reflected a growth of 2.5 percentage points, or 42.8%, which exceeds the state average of 41.1%. We are making great progress toward our three-year growth goal of 46% proficiency.
Thank you.
Madam President, that concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, December 5th, 2023, at 7:00 PM, following the Student Services meeting in the boardroom here at the Blair Administration Building. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to the Student Services Committee, are there any further comments or questions about the TNL report? or questions about the TNL report? Mrs. Kozlowski?
Thank you. I think that a lot of the discussions that we had last night in speaking, talking about metrics, we did ask to get a deeper dive into some of the data and understanding, and more so specific to Waukesha. When I take a look at the state average, I would highlight that MPS does do a good job of lowering the state average. So, when we take a look at Waukesha and comparison to the state average, I don't think that gives us a fair enough guide as to where we are in Waukesha. And I think Dr. Piasak had a very good point that we are proud of our students in Waukesha. We know that they can achieve big things, hard things, and while we have seen success in these metrics and the changes of them that we are excited to see, we are clearly not where we need to be and still challenging what has to get done to get there. And we're taking the right steps. The new curriculum that we're doing, we're already seeing it take traction. But I do think it is fair to say that the numbers that we did see within the Forward Exam and some of those, those are really putting us right back to where we were pre-pandemic, and we know that we can achieve much higher.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. We'll move on to our Student Services Committee. In Mr. McCaffrey's absence tonight, Mr. Wad will give the committee update.
Thank you, Madam President. The last Student Services Committee meeting was held on November 7th, 2023. We had one action item, which was Policy 5200 Attendance, which was approved during the Consent Agenda. This policy was recently revised. There were minimal changes that were adopted. As, any questions on that? Okay. Discussion and information items covered. One, we discussed safety drills. Jennifer Gennerman, Deputy Superintendent, presented the logs of safety drills from the 2022-23 school year. State statute requires the administration to report to the board on the status of fire, weather, and emergency drills conducted during the prior school year. As with any drill or emergency situation, our district has standard response protocol used throughout our system. Each classroom and learning space had signage with drill language and safety routes posted. Fire drills must be conducted at least once each month, tornado or other hazard drills twice per year, and school safety incidents twice per year. The committee members reviewed and discussed the data on the drill log and summary sheets. Questions on that? All right. Our second discussion item was around seclusion and restraint. Lisa Pollan, Director of Secondary Special Education, and Hadassah Robinson, Director of Elementary Special Education, presented information on seclusion and restraint from the 2022-23 school year. As with the safety drills, seclusion and restraint data is required to be reported out on an annual basis. The district showed a 25% decrease in seclusions and restraints last school year from the 2021-22 school year. This reduction can be attributed to additional staff training, to additional district trainers, and continued professional development with the use of a program called Nonviolent Crisis Intervention. A large part of the training focuses on de-escalation strategies to avoid using physical restraint. Yes?
Thank you. I just want to comment on that. I know every year we review seclusion and restraint, and periodically there's policy revisions and things that we take up. But I know when I first came onto the board, as well when Dr. Cook was still here, we had a lot of conversation about bringing in additional training on the nonviolent crisis intervention, and more and more staff were being trained up in that. I did miss it if it was discussed at the committee, was the percentage of staff or the number of staff at this point that have had that training?
We did not share the percentage or number of staff. We just celebrated that we had additional trainers within our system, but that's something we could bring back and/or include in future reports.
And I apologize for putting anybody on the spot, but I know that that number has increased significantly, and I think that's just reflected here. And anything that we can do to help de-escalate situations with our students so they feel safe and supported, and as well as the students around them, I think that's just a huge success. So, credit to the administration and the teachers and staff who have taken that as a priority. I'm just really happy to see that.
All right. Thank you. Item three was a transportation update. Ms. Gennerman provided an update on transportation. As a district, we strive to provide high-quality, safe transportation services. The goal is for all public and private school students who are eligible for transportation to receive before and after-school transportation that is on time. Historically, the school district of Waukesha and First Student have had a strong partnership. Due to the bus driver shortage, there has been an increase in our collaborative efforts. The district has promoted driver opportunities with social media postings, county fair recruitment space, banners at school sites, informational tables at school events, and advertisements at the local colleges. We will also be hosting a hiring event on November 14th for bus drivers and educational aides. This hiring event will be held at 3:30 PM. Daily touchpoints with First Student have focused on tracking applications and the progression of candidates through the hiring process. Routes have been reviewed for consolidation by taking frequent student attendance on the buses. As the school year started, there were 11 routes to run serviced, and routes tripled up, resulting in early and late routes. The priority was to get students to and from school. Priority was to get students to and from school. Over time, with increased driver capacity and additional route consolidation, we have only one route today that is currently unserviced. This route, number 34, will be starting next week. In addition, there will be adjustments to routes that are now running early and late. Since the beginning of the school year, we have provided a weekly communication to all transportation families, along with a dashboard that can be seen on our website. Our principals, staff, and families have done a tremendous job pulling together to provide care and transportation for students.
Do you have a comment on that particular topic?
Yeah, I do, actually. Yeah, I just wanted to add on to that. I want to compliment Dr. Seibert, Ms. Gennerman, all the folks that they have worked with who have gone above and beyond. I mean, we contract with First Student. I mean, they are a partner of ours, but as we've heard from them over the last two months as this issue has affected so many families within the district, the work that they have done to work with our partner to get to where we are today, which is hopefully by next week, zero open routes, plus all the work that they have done working with individual families in the district to try to address the needs that they, the needs of those families has been very impressive to watch, and I'm extremely grateful. I know I've talked to people who reside in other districts and who have knowledge. There are a lot of districts who are in worse shape than we are today, who may have started in a better spot or at the same spot we did. So, that's just a testament to the work of, not just First Student, but in particular the folks within the district and our administration who have really focused on getting this issue resolved. We're not all the way there yet, but at such a better spot than we were in when the school year started, and I'm grateful for their efforts.
I have a comment and then just a question. So, on Saturday, I attended the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Fall Legislative Conference. There were a number of districts that were actually present there, and transportation was not on the agenda, but it was definitely a topic of discussion. As we know, we're not alone. Every district is facing transportation challenges. I think for the sheer number of routes that we're servicing, the ability to close this gap over the first couple of months of the school year has been greatly appreciated. I've seen a lot of the behind-the-scenes work that Dr. Seibert and Ms. Gennerman and their teams have done, Yvonne in particular. I think a lot of people maybe don't appreciate that, just the sheer number of hours, time, and effort that goes in to trying to make all this work. So, I greatly appreciate that. And I know that we're reducing, or we're minimizing, if not closing, the gap completely on the number of routes we're able to service. The one question that I'm hearing still from a few parents is, when do we think we can move out of the early pickup scenario? Because it sounds like for certain students, it's kind of hitting the same class every day now for going on a couple of months. So, what is your sense in terms of the timing of some of those routes where we now have drivers, but we might need to drop off later, pick up early?
I can start with that, Ms. Gennerman. So, to Mr. Wad's point, we have Route 34 starting on Monday. On Tuesday, we have a couple of early-late routes. The early part we'll maintain, but we'll be able to start picking those students up on time at the end of the day. So, that's a step. We have a number of drivers right now, First Student does, I say "we" because we work together so closely, in the training process, and a number of road tests that'll be happening here in the next couple of weeks. We're hopeful the hiring event that Mr. Wad mentioned will also be helpful. But it is going to take us a little bit of time to continue to untangle those three-tiered routes that caused the early and lates, to make them the two-tier routes that we traditionally run. So, I can't give you necessarily, it's going to be some time yet, but I don't know exactly how long until we see how those drivers progress through the training and road testing process. But, Ms. Gennerman, anything you would add?
I think in our preliminary plans with Route 34 and another route, we would be having one route that is running early or late adjusted next week. So, we're still working on some details for that. But again, as more drivers come on staff, then the more routes we can get covered.
And I assume it doesn't affect every student the same way, right? One student may be missing PE, but another student might be missing an AP class or math or science class. Is there anything or any guidance we can give to parents who may have students who are struggling or maybe in a situation where they can't necessarily adjust a schedule?
I think at any time, families want to reach out to teachers and principals and really have some of those conversations. I know already that at some of the middle schools, there's been unique adjustments into whether it's a schedule or just like a drop-in session, or maybe lunch looks a little bit different, just to ensure that the child has the support that they need to be successful. So, I would just encourage families and students to really connect with teachers as well as the principals to make sure that their needs are being met. But I know everyone's been doing a great job pulling together in this unusual situation.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions about transportation?
All right. Our fourth and final discussion topic revolved around district communication. We got an update from Dr. Seibert and Mary Jo King, Communication Specialist, who presented the refined ways we are communicating with staff and families this year. Internally, we are moving from weekly Friday updates to a semi-monthly system in a revised newsletter called The Explorer. One communication each month will be focused on student, staff, and department updates in a searchable Google Doc. The second will highlight school board, board committees, and all administrator meeting highlights. The first edition of The Explorer had 67% readership. Communication with district families is taking many forms. We continue to use Peachjar as our primary means of sharing our district and community organization event flyers. Staff or community partners upload their flyers to the application, and Mary Jo approves them for posting. We also share a SDW community newsletter twice yearly with information about our schools and a letter from Dr. Seibert. Along with other nearby districts, we continue to post more timely news to X and Instagram, Facebook. Our success rate at obtaining likes and followers is on par with our neighboring districts. We also have a tool called Thrill Share that can be used by the schools to connect all the social media together on their webpages. Our other focus this school year is creating a template library of crisis forums for principals to use. The goal here is to simplify the process of creating and sending critical updates to families. Within the next two months, Mary Jo hopes to have many of these templates available to the schools. The Student Services Committee will meet next Tuesday, December, will meet next on Tuesday, December 5th, at 6:00 PM, and this completes the Student Services Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Wad. Any last comments or questions regarding Student Services or Communications? All right. Next up is our Human Resources and Compensation Committee, Mr. Borowski.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. President. We have one action item and no discussion items this evening. The action item is the approval of the 2024-2025 school calendar. Earlier this evening, the HR and Compensation Committee approved the 2024-2025 school calendar, and if you recall, it was presented to the board in October for review. As in years past, we've already obtained teacher feedback at the Superintendent's Advisory Committee for Professional Staff and from the Superintendent's Advisory Council for Parents. Several notes on the calendar. The first day of school will be Tuesday, September 3rd, which is a day after Labor Day. The early release days will be October 23rd, 2024, February 13th, May 23rd, and June 11th, 2025, for elementary and middle school, and students will be released two hours early on those days. New teacher welcome days are August 19th and 20th, 2024. Professional Development Days are scheduled for August 21st, 22nd, August 27th through the 29th, October 24th, and then January 20th, 2025, and February 14th, 2025. And as a reminder, January 20th is Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Thanksgiving break will be November 27th to the 29th, 2024. Winter break will be December 23rd through January 1st, returning Thursday, January 2nd, 2025. The second Monday off for families in January was actually moved to February on President's Day. Spring break will be March 24th to the 28th, and that's also aligned with the other area school districts. Last day of school, which everybody enjoys, for students will be June 11th, 2025, and this will be an early-release day for elementary and middle school students, which we're doing for the first time this year. And then the last day of work for teachers will be June 12th, 2025. Mrs. President, I move to approve the 2024-2025 school calendar as presented.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Zenobia. Any last questions or comments about the calendar? All right. Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
Markell Moore?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
David Wad?
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski?
Aye.
Mark Borowski?
Aye.
Kelly Piasak?
Aye. Passes eight-zero.
And, Mrs. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Borowski. Mr. Zenobia, any updates for policy and government relations this evening?
No, we did not meet in November, but we will meet December 11th on Monday, I believe, 7:00 PM here in the boardroom.
Thank you. And last up for tonight is the Finance and Facilities Committee, Mrs. Kozlowski.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance and Facility Committee met on Monday, November 6th. There were two action items and two discussion items. The first action item was the approval of the North High School Pool Project. Continuing with our reviews of district capital improvements and previously approved HVAC work for the Waukesha North Pool, the committee held a lengthy discussion related to the next possible steps in determining the scope of the work for the Waukesha North High School Pool area. It was agreed that more discussion was needed before the issue was forwarded to the board for consideration. The committee asked that any future recommendations or discussion include possible project options, approximate costs, along with answers to questions that were raised. At this time, there is no current recommendation presented to the board to take action or to review. Information was shared by the administration on current district swim co-op agreements, joint Waukesha High School teams, and recent high school swim team participation levels. This information has been loaded into board docs for your review. Any questions?
I don't see any.
The second approval item was the approval of the Express Swim Contract. A draft Express Swim Contract renewal was discussed at the meeting. The committee asked that this agreement be brought back into consideration after additional information is gathered. Per Board policy, 0155 Committees, FNF Committee, has the authority to approve facility rental agreements. Standard practice for items such as this agreement is to also agendize it on the board agenda in case the committee should request it to be forwarded to the full board for further discussion or consideration. If a board member should have any questions related to this agreement, we would ask that it be forwarded to myself and/or Mr. Clark. The first discussion item was the 2024-2025 Budget Assumptions. The committee reviewed the initial budget assumptions to be used in the calculation of the district's long-range budget forecast. Once the budget forecast-
Once the budget forecast is completed, the results will be shared at an upcoming committee The second discussion item was the monthly budget report. Revenues and expenditures continue to be within budgeted limits for both the General and Special Education Fund. The next Finance and Facilities meeting is scheduled for Monday, December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, at five thirty PM in the boardroom. Madam President, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. All right, moving to other business. I just did want to offer one public service announcement since we had our high schoolers here today, and there was some discussion about open houses that are coming. Some of these will happen before we come back again for our next committee meeting. So the North, Waukesha North High School Open House will be on Tuesday, December fifth, from six to eight PM. The Waukesha West Open House will be on Wednesday, December sixth, starting at five thirty PM for, with a introduction for private and parochial students, and then kicking off at six ten with principal welcome and tours and sessions beginning at six thirty through eight PM. And then the Waukesha South Open House is Thursday, December seventh, at five thirty PM. I might encourage all of the board members to participate in the open houses as well if you're curious about what the turnout is and how that's going. Those are always a fun time. All right, our next full board meeting is Wednesday, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, here in the boardroom. At this time, I would entertain any recommendations for future board or committee action or discussion Seeing none, we do have a need to adjourn to executive session this evening, both Items B and C, and I'd be looking for someone to make that motion. Mr. Moore, thank you. You're so good at it.
I make a motion to adjourn the executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eighty-five, Parent One, Parent G, confirmed with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation and which it is or is likely to become involved, former employee matter. I make a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen twenty-five, Parent One, Parent E, for deliberating or negotiating the purchases of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public businesses whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, public transportation contract.
Just to clarify, pupil car.
Pupil, sorry.
Transportation.
I'm under the weather today.
We have enough problems with the pupils, we don't need to transport the whole public. All right, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Kozlowski. Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please?
David Wad.
Aye.
Markel Moore.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes eight zero, and with that, we are adjourned to executive session. We will not, will be, we may be returning, to be determined. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
All right, we are returned from executive session. Mr. Wad, would you take the roll call, please?
Yes. Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey. Kerry Kozlowski.
Here.
Markel Moore.
Here.
Mark Borowski.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Here.
Betty Koenig.
Here.
Kelly Piasik.
Here.
David Wad.
Here.
All right, I believe we have a motion.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the adenum to pupil transportation services contract as amended.
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Mrs. Kozlowski. All right, any further conversation? Mr. Wad, could you take one last roll call, please?
Markel Moore.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Pat McCaffrey. Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes eight zero, and with that, we are adjourned for the evening. Thank you.
Nine thirty-six.